Morning folks, appreciate everybody being with us today. Uh, we have a pretty uh light schedule today as things go. We're gonna start off with voters and taxpayers. If anybody would like to address the commission. These economists are pulling them and start there with your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute time limit that uh we're gonna stick with today. Even our light schedule is to keep the rules fair and square and consistent. If anyone would like to address the commission under those terms. Thank you all for counting. Apparently Rick wants to say something.
Uh, I'd like to introduce Audrey Ansell. She's our uh new intern for Economic Workforce Development uh through the Ohio Regional Planning Commission. Uh, they need a pool of interns from around the the state to come and work for local government. We've done this about four years in a row and we're lucky to have Audrey with us.
Welcome. Is this a summer gig or what's going on here?
Yeah, this is a summer internship. Uh, I'm going into my senior year at Ohio University. Um, studying communication studies with an emphasis in political communication and public advocacy. So this is a really great opportunity for me to kind of just get back to community that actually um. So I've lived in North Carolina the last 10 years when I was grew up. I grew up here and Lancaster I was born right here. And Lancaster I live just five minutes down the road on Cook Path. So um it's really awesome to kind of return to this community that I'm from and hope to give back and just you know, get some experience in what local government looks like as well as the public service sector.
Those are some of the best introductory remarks I've heard from an intern in 14 years. I like it.
It's the O U T.
All right, well, a couple of folks showed up just a little bit late and missed voters and taxpayers. And I'm certainly not gonna put any pressure on them to speak, but if anybody missed their opportunity. Stephanie.
Up the stairs, I was like, wasn't bringing the step there. But I was like.
I watched everything and I could have sworn I heard.
Yeah, Brady's like.
Oh, shoot.
Still wanna go. Stephanie Taylor, hashtag for humanity of Southeast Ohio. Um, we have a lot of really fun things happening right now as always. But um, we are dedicating the Graff Street home on Thursday at 3:30. So that is home number six here in the last.
On certain day.
Thursday, this Thursday at 3:30.
Yep, yep.
Yep, and it's on Graff Street, 1516 Graff Street. Um, so Kaylee and her um three children will be the homeowners of that home. And then King Street's already in progress, 411 King Street. If you've had a chance to go through that neighborhood, can't really miss it. I mean, it's right there. Um, and it's made a lot of progress in the last week. So it went from basically the foundation to being under roof within three days. So um, we've.
Is King a multi-story?
Yes, it's a two-story. Yep, we gotta match that neighborhood and um, that's what's in that area. So if you're looking to volunteer, get involved in that, we've got that going on. And then the Career Center, we're still working on that one. And uh, we'll be getting that over into Fairfield Beach soon. So probably by the end of the year, hopefully. So yeah, we got a lot going on and Project Playhouse will be here before we know it as well. So but you know, I love the remarks that you made as well, just about being back home. That's, I love that. That's very, very cool. So yeah, that's, that's what we got going on. Excited stuff.
Thank you. Commission remains very appreciative of you and all that you do for our community.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? The next thing is Austin, which really would be today, but happy to answer your question. Appreciate it uh done right now. Administration update.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Um, with Stephanie being here, I wanna take a moment to congratulate her on uh being about ready to assume the presidency for the Lancaster Rotary Club.
Oh, nice.
So I think July 1st is your, is that your official person?
Begin July 1st, first meeting is July 7th. So keep forward to it. Been three years since they like voted me in.
Yeah, there's a long progression.
Yes.
Congratulations. Uh, just a few reminders about upcoming meetings. Uh, next Tuesday, May 27th, as well as June 3rd, there is no commission meeting on those Tuesdays. Uh, so you will see a few more resolutions on today's agenda uh for folks preparing for that. I'll still be able to approve things administratively. Uh, so that will continue to happen. And then also July 1st, there is no meeting that week. And then September 2nd, no meeting that week either. Review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals and there are 34 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting. Couple resolutions of note, uh, resolution on the agenda for the commissioner's reappointment of Mr. Greg Butcher, Ms. Sonia Simpson, and Mr. Curtis Schonk to the Transportation Improvement District Board. These are two-year appointments that would end on May 31st, 2027. Um, still serving uh on the Ted Board is Rick Zabrack and then Engineer Jeremiah. It's just five person, right, Rick? Uh, we have a resolution to approve a plan agreement with CCIO for inclusion in the Workers Compensation Group Retrospective Rating Plan Program. The county is currently participating in the plan and this agreement is for 2026. Jeff, do you wanna add anything to that?
No.
Okay. Next one's gonna be you too. Dog Sholder has a resolution to donate four phasers. That's uh the actual name of of these items to Pickaway County. Uh, we're no longer having use for these items and we are donating them. Anything on that?
Uh, no. Just, I see good names.
All right. Did remind me a little bit. Uh, there's a resolution to approve a revolving loan fund that cakes creatively by Crystal, uh, which does business as Porter's Coffee House for 50,000. These funds will be used for building and parking lot renovations. Rick?
Yeah, uh, a couple of loans with them. We've been a big reason for their uh their success. They have three locations now and uh this parking lot will not serve them, but it will serve uh the old village of Pickerington as they look to uh expand more, more options. They need more parking.
It's a, that nice spot that has some yummy items if you've not been there. Uh, next one is you too, Rick. Resolution from Workforce Development to improve a memory and a understanding with Hocking College. Uh, this is identifying some of the Super Rapids Funds there that was awarded Fairfield County. Anything else?
Yeah, just for the board with uh, we're very much for quick things like CBL drugs, equipment, water, wastewater equipment, so.
Awesome. I know that's taken a little bit of work with Hocking College, so thanks for your perseverance there. Engineers Office has a resolution to approve an equipment lease agreement with the City of Lancaster. This is a mutually beneficial agreement. Uh, JFS Child Protective Services has a resolution to approve the appointment of a representative to the Safe Opportunities Foster Alliance. Uh, this resolution will appoint Sarah Fortner and authorizes Protective Services to pay what's now being known as SOFA, the required membership dues uh under that code of regulations. Cory?
Um, this is in regard to the Gouy County Wellness Center that we give our partnering with nine counties on. Yeah, we give us the opportunity when it's up and running, uh, which is planned for July. We hopefully realize the savings in placement costs for the building center.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? You know, obviously it's nice to have that, but uh is there any plans in the future to have something in proportion?
Yes, thank you for that question because the reason that we're going this route with this alliance as opposed to um having it be county run is that uh there's a limit of 25 beds that you could have total if it were under accounting and we're doing this alliance so that they, we can not unlimited. So there's a lot of licensing that can take up to a year and a half to do. And with this approach, um, we'd be able to in the future open one, maybe even in Fairfield County. And we could have it under its umbrella and what we, the licensing would already be done.
Is that state licensing?
Yes.
By so long. That's nonsense.
Good point.
That's a process, you know, and that's cruel.
And then JFS also has six resolutions regarding regarding network placements and amendments to previous placement agreements. Our regional planning has two resolutions for CDBG participation agreements, one for the Village of Amanda and the other for the Village of Rushville. Josh, anything there?
Uh, no, this are just the standard agreements that we do between uh entities that are receiving funding. So we'll have a few more of those for 2024.
Thank you very much. And lastly, Soil and Water has a resolution on the agenda to enter into the 2024 Cooperative Agreement for Funding to Acquire Agricultural Easements through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program. Chad, anything there?
I'd just like to say thank you for commissioners to supporting this fund for two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Uh, no budget update from Bart today, so we'll move on to Bennett with calendar review and invitations received, please.
Under calendar review and invitations received, the MCU Governing Board meeting on May 21st at 2:00 PM at the Fairfield County EOC on Baldwin Drive in Lancaster. The American Legion Post 283 Dedication of Corporal David A. Johnston Memorial Highway on May 22nd at 1:00 PM at 7725 Refugee Road in Pickerington. The Habitat for Humanity of Southeast Ohio Home dedication on May 22nd at 3:30 PM located at 1516 Graff Street in Lancaster. And to save the date for the CCIO Summer Symposium on August 24th through the 26th at the Hawking Hills Lodge and Conference Center.
Bennett, I want to touch on that. One, I'm definitely gonna try to make the uh dedication there on the 22nd. But this thing on the 24th to the 26th, the the Summer Symposium, what, what, what are we thinking about here? What are we doing?
Uh, CCIO in the past few years has done a, a summer event on different uh topics that are important to counties. Don't have the agenda for that yet. They're just, it's literally just to save the date that is at the Hawking Hills Conference.
Last three days.
Um, I think it probably starts like afternoon on a Sunday and maybe ends early on the Tuesday.
So as we learn more about that, we'll think about it.
Sure, I'll get you the agenda once. I think they were talking about publishing it um the, I think the second week of June.
And I think legit, if any of the three of us are gonna take a couple of days to do something, it's gonna have to be really high. All right, Bennett, please continue.
Under correspondence, a letter to Commissioner Levy from Lieutenant Governor Jim Tressel regarding Governor's Executive Workforce Board. And a letter of support from Senior Hub, Amos on Wheels, Executive Director Anna Toven regarding the development of a Central Ohio Regional Council of Governments focused on senior supportive services.
Thank you, Bennett. And um, so we get letters every week from uh folks on different issues and things. Uh, this letter from my Lieutenant Governor Tressel, I found particularly enjoyable. So I don't know if it's in a packet somewhere, you get your hands on it, but it's, it's some, it's kinda neat. It's just a neat letter from Lieutenant Governor Tressel to Commissioner Levy. Uh, but some of his language choices and phraseology, it's uh, it's a good letter, it's a good read. And he is very, very happy to have gotten some more of Ann's cookies.
He loves that.
So I, I have to, I, with that, I have to tell a story. So uh, a couple of staff members, who were staff members, were uh, had a governor Hughes dead. Transitions to um, had a governor Hughes dead. And he brought them all together and I, I think uh, I was told there was about 20 of them all together. And, and he asked the question, how many, how many people do you think would think Ronnie's swearing in Sarah? And he said, who is the closest? I'm gonna give you the best cookies you've ever eaten in your life. And many of the staff members who had Ann's cookies spoke up. Well, you haven't had the best cookies ever. So he, you know, obviously he wouldn't talk about Ann's cookies at that time, so. Pretty interesting.
That's cool. Very cool. Thank you, Bennett. Um, we'll move on to updates from elected officials. We're just gonna go uh kinda in order here. Treasurer funds.
Good morning. Um, last week was the spring conference for the county treasurers, uh, Thursday through, actually Wednesday through Friday. Uh, this year I'm the president of the Southeast Ohio group of uh treasurers, uh, which includes Franklin County. But uh, a lot of discussions and one discussion that uh as to elimination of property taxes. So we'll see how that all pans out once they go through the process. Um, no solutions, obviously, of what to do as far as moving forward to give some relief to taxpayers. Um, our executive director slash lobbyist went through about a dozen different bills being introduced. They're basically Band-Aids that really don't address the overall questions just so that they can tell their constituents that they did support a bill. Anyway, get to the point. Uh, it was a good conference, come up with some new ideas. Um, also as far as the office goes, we're in the process of getting ready for second half collection. We'll probably be going to press later this month, which is almost up and have bills out with the due date of July the 17th. That's it.
Commissioner Levy wants a detailed explanation for your absence last week.
Um, I was in France last week. Um, had a, had a trip and uh, so I was telling Carrie, this is sort of the year-long celebration of my wife and I for our 50th wedding anniversary. This was on our bucket list. Uh, the highlight to me, a couple of things. One was being in Notre Dame Cathedral was the highlight. The other was uh visiting, we were in Normandy and went to Omaha Beach. The day we were there, it was extremely windy, but the tide was out and uh it's still emotional today, about that. So uh, it's hard to believe that 24 young men gave their lives that day. 2,400 young men gave their lives that day for our freedom. Um, after that, we went to the cemetery, walked around where there are about just shy of 10,000 graves there. And uh, it's a, it's a emotional trip.
You told the story, so I don't have to go there inside. I would love to see the place. Thank you.
Well, Jim, we appreciate your uh service to our community and your thoughtfulness about the service. How are you today?
Um, I'm super busy right now, but we are feeling a lot of new calls of folks receiving letters in the mail that say they're from the Fairfield County and to contact the Fairfield County Recorder regarding a state tax lien. Pay immediately, call this 800 number, we can help you with your debt relief. Um, and so I had a customer actually forward one to me. I called the number, cause when I looked up the number, it says it's a phishing number. So I called the number and I talked to this gentleman on the phone who said, well, someone may have stolen your identity if you don't owe this money or you never had this business or, or this, that, whatever, naming the information on the, the document. But for $250, we can research that for you and clear your identity. So just so folks are aware, there's some sort of new scam out there. Um, as the騎士 Association, we're getting um on our forum and we're talking about it. It's happening in all of the counties it seems. Um, they're just sprinkling in um different counties here and there. But um, just to make folks aware that we don't hold state tax liens at all. They can certainly check with the clerk's office if they feel that they owe something. But don't pay this third party any money because they are not, they're not truly a debt collection service for a debt you probably don't even have.
Nice question about that. One, I appreciate you, you clearing us, but I'm curious, are there other channels that you also make alerts through? When you become aware of something like that? Like, did this, just adult protective services get a notice of that that scams out there? Does the sheriff's office get information that that scams out there? Are there any kind of normal channels that you would communicate that?
Um, in the past, um, the only thing we've ever done really was a press release about it. But that's a really good thought process as, as we as an association determine these facts to be true. I don't wanna rush out there and say, you know, something is, is a scam when it may not be. Um, so right now we're, we're trying to do our due diligence, but, but from the conversation that I just had with the gentleman on the phone and from what I'm hearing with the few folks that are starting to call in and, and see what's going on around the state, um, those would probably be really great places to reach out to and add that. So thank you very much. We'll do that.
Uh, I appreciate you and.
Thank you.
And Lisa, feel free to get with Bennett and he can do up an image that we can put on social media to, to share this information and get it out there. And then usually to share problems and others can share that.
Once confirmed, I think is what you're.
Right, right. Yeah, we definitely wanna make, make sure that, you know, someone is just not making a mistake.
Yeah.
Because there are third-party agencies out there that do try and collect and help with that relief. Although a lot of times, um, when it comes right down to it, if it's IRS or state tax or whatever, those, you, you need to work with them directly.
If you find out that you could pay $250 to have your record all cleaned up, I would like to do.
We're not gonna put that on social.
Just that Lisa has highlighted, that particular type of scam, there's quite a bit of activity where people are trying to set up fake vendors. And that is um, a long time internal conversation we've had. It's part of our procedures, just appreciates everybody's patience relating to, you know, how those control procedures are in place because there's a rampant activity of people trying to set up a vendor, new vendor, and attempt to have uh fake invoices paid. It's in every county as well. It just seems as if all of these types of scams are becoming more and more sophisticated. They look real, the, the emails look real, the logos look real. Everything has a, a sense about it that's much more sophisticated than it has been in the past.
You know, I, I saw an article during the last couple of days. I, I, poker is a hobby and it's a poker article. But this uh, gambler had an in with like, think it was the Houston uh school district, like the main school district in Houston or something. And they, they, they set up a fake vendor and ran like $900,000 out of the fake vendor through the school system and then use the money to go looms uh in a casino or something. But I was um surprised by that in the sense that, you know, we all feel pretty good about our checks and balances. And you think, how could that happen? Thank you, Scott.
I, um, in your review folder, you will see the press release relating to the sex annual update. You should expect pretty much the same thing with the sex annual update that we expect a triennial update. The market is very similar. We already have our tax abstract to the state. We await their approval and are looking forward to taking in additional stakeholder input to continue those communications. We will once again hold informal hearings. We will do uh no lines that anyone will have to wait with. We'll have appointments and that has worked well. We're continuing on that same path. We are in the throes of our financial audit. And just wanna say thank you to everybody for your sense of urgency. There will be questions to come from Perry, the auditors, and the annual comprehensive financial report has shaped up quite nicely. We are introducing DocLink this month. Very excited about that. The May Budget Commission meeting will use that new tool, which is designed specifically for Ohio's process of a budget commission. We're very excited about that and say thank you to Bev, Amanda for their really diligent work and making sure that that is up and running before our deadline in June. It was an internal and self-imposed deadline and probably to beat it by a month. Also, just wanna mention, since the budget commission is on my mind, that the long-term plans for each property tax levy is something that we will want to take in again this year. So those requests are going to be going out soon. Schools are already used to this sort of thing and are um quite sophisticated in how they provide that information. Each levy will also need to provide that information so we can have it on file to justify the rates.
And what, have you heard any uh recent updates on the legislation that would amend the makeup of the budget?
No updates. Everybody's focus is pretty much on what Jim has mentioned as far as the property tax issue itself. Um, you know, which is so significant, you know, for us, it's $50 million. You know, so, you know, a county of our size, it makes the biggest of difference. And for counties of every, and you know, every part of the state, they would have issues relating to that and let alone every other entity. And so that's where everybody's focus is, I think.
Thank you. So, um, I don't know if you saw, but the Pickerington Road Interchange sold Shelley and Sands. Looks like they're new parent of bidder. I assume they are. We had, may have two contracts a week for you. Um, they talked about putting uh project trailers on, on some of our property. They talked about maybe using property as part of. Does she know if they can pack beyond either? When we get to that point, are we looking at um some sort of a below-market, be helpful to the project situation? Are we looking at uh, you know, market rate type thing or? Um, cause I was contacted by all three, there's four bidders, but um, composing and them. And we just said a dollar a cubic yard, cause that's what everybody usually does. I didn't wanna mess with any of their bidding process. I was just curious.
Appreciate it. And Shelley and Sands did the Carroll Interchange.
Yes, they did the Carroll Interchange. Rick, I know nothing's going on in your world, so I mean, if you wanna say something, that's fine.
I'll defer to the. But uh, there's been some coverage on uh potential, it's in the news, potential data center in uh Miller's Port. I clarify that none of this is a deal. Still negotiations that need to take place. There's been some, a lot of negative feedback on social media about data centers. Um, which, um, let's reiterate, if anybody is holding one of these, we need data. Anybody uh has paid attention to the AI and how the US needs to take the lead in AI? Data centers are a huge part of that. Uh, so they need to look at somewhere or we don't, or we might not. Uh, so uh, overall, glad that they're the county. Hope it's something like this, uh, but it will be a trace admission of project. True. Um, it's not.
Yeah, so you know, um, the media called after our last meeting regarding the annexation and I tried to not answer questions. Um, very well. Is that right? So nothing in there caused any heartburn up the chain, so to speak? I, I didn't say, but I appreciate your.
This will be right my back. So it's, it'll be a thing.
Ask Commissioner Levy side if it's good for Miller's Port. No reason, I understand it. So I appreciate. And, and Dave mentioned, and it's, it's true from a location standpoint, he'll have the best view of all of us of whatever does or doesn't happen there. Um, but he is not um involved in the project in any financial or way whatsoever. So I don't want people to get confused that just because of his proximity that he has some interest in this project, he does not. John Coaches.
What's uh exciting this past week?
So I bugged John yesterday morning because I, 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 I'm back on social media and social media had a little mini eruption yesterday morning at 9:00 AM thinking there had been an earthquake in the Lithopolis and Amanda area. And then there were the, all these comments and people saying, yeah, yeah, I found it. It was 2.7 and I'm, I'm. And I'm, I'm thinking like, we had an earthquake, I call emergency management. What about this earthquake? Anyway, apparently it was what, John? Sonic booms.
There were, there was, there was some suggestions that. These are military. You didn't really know.
But some of the descriptions for people, what they experienced, it sounded earthquakey, but I guess these booms were huge. I don't know.
Yeah, it, it somewhere around 9:40. Nothing was on the radar that were.
Sometimes when they do a testing for, uh, geological surveys, oil and so on and so forth, they do all this.
I have those ones that are unexplained and go down to hail cane. We have a lot of waters. We have a lot of hail canons. I don't know. It's quite loud. Giant, but most of those folks are, you know, what's a hail cane? It is a, it is a controlled propane explosion in a cannon shot up in a cloud that disrupts the hail formations. It doesn't hurt fruit.
I saw it in movies.
I actually have one for some reason.
All right. Thank you, John. Dan, how are you today?
Pretty well, thank you. Uh, no update of note from the IG department. We continue with the active program.
Right. Corey, what's up, buddy?
I will just, uh, briefly recap at our Family Fun Fest event last week. On Thursday was a, and it was, uh, we had perfect weather, nice and warm, sunny. And we had great attendance, um, winters. We all, we all count the number of people that come in, but it goes through 600 hot dogs. So, uh, that gives some indication of how many. I love it. So, yeah, great weather. Not always the.
Jeff Porter, any, any updates from you? I'm a little curious if our trajectory on health insurance has improved at all.
Um, it's improved a bit. Uh, we have, uh, come out of that period of high utilization. Uh, we are still experiencing, uh, quite a bit of growth in, uh, pharmacy costs, uh, which we're looking to address. And our, um, beginning of the renewal process starts this Friday, uh, with a meeting with United Healthcare, uh, to discuss plan review, um, and 2024's results. Um, and we are continuing to evaluate whether or not United Healthcare will continue to complete our name in the future.
Yeah, I've, uh, been watching a little bit of the news recently on United Healthcare and it's, it's been horrible. But hopefully they can get their stuff in one sack and continue this service that we appreciate.
Continue to evaluate and there are always other options available.
I'm not denigrating United Healthcare. It's just been.
We're not saying anything I haven't already said to them, so.
Anyway, we appreciate you. I'm sorry, I got distracted. What's? Right. Commissioner Levesey, any? Last week I, I was able to attend the developmental disabilities graduation. And it's always such a good event because, um, you know, the work those folks do there at the PD is just pretty incredible. I have to congratulate them for the work that they do. Rick mentioned, uh, workforce grad- graduation. Absolutely amazing. To see where we are now, where we came from. And looking at that crowd, I don't know how many you thought was there, but there was, I think, more there than I think you anticipated. Yeah. And, uh, you know, in, in, in you're, you're starting to see family members be very appreciative of the workforce center. Because their child or their niece or nephew or whomever have a pathway for a good job at which they felt they wouldn't have had that if, if that workforce center hadn't been there. So, you know, and, and so, Rick, it's not me, it's you and your staff. And you've done all the heavy lifting and I'm so appreciative of that. Because you, you've changed lives, quite frankly.
Appreciate that. I appreciate the support that everybody in this room. Um, you know, this, um, this workforce center over the years, uh, it's, it's pretty neat. You know, at Pickerton Chamber Awards Dinner, um, woman came over during the break and said, hey, my son graduated from the workforce center today and I just wanted to, I saw you here. I wanted to come over and thank you. Uh, it changed his life, said, because he would have been just sitting home playing video games all year. And now he has a job, uh, he's going to be an electrician. So that's, that's the stuff that, that everybody in our group did is. Uh, the helping with building, helping get the network stuff, the partnerships we've had with, with JFS, part of making sure we get paid for things. Tony, who's done such a huge, uh, huge part with, uh, water wastewater program, having one of the few in the state really get that up and running. We had six students go through that this year. Tucker Brown was helping with the vision at the beginning. Uh, just everyone around this room, um, you know, all the HR issues and things about, okay, what do we do about, uh, having students in this building, wanting all of her guidance and support over the last few years. It's just been, it's truly a, a team effort and I, I'm lucky enough to get to hear some of those things. Share this one. So it comes full circle. One of the moms that was at the event on Thursday, uh, was excited because, uh, she gets a student graduating. Her daughter went through our summer camp a few years ago, will be able to come next year and do the pre-apprenticeship at the Workforce Center. So she's just been waiting, you know, uh, since summer camp for her to be able to come back. It's, it's, it's nice to see families that see the advantage of it. They want to keep that.
So the other part of that discussion is the, the amount of construction work that's taking place there. Obviously we're going to tour that moving right ahead and very excited about that.
Yeah, be glad we're getting launched. Beginning of October. Restorative therapy program will be launched, uh, next fall. Uh, and we're looking at healthcare in general, um, and what we can do. Lancaster schools has a health, um, health tech program. They had, they were 25 students. They have 50 juniors apply for that program. They, they have 450 students. That's one of every nine students. Apply, it's not, was applied to go into this two-year health tech program. So we need to do a piece of that, so that healthcare signing. So we can start all this. Aged, I really am.
So Rick, while we have you, I, I think it's as a result of age appropriate cognitive decline, which I might be experiencing. I can't remember how the Hoover meeting ended in terms of next steps. Do you remember? Uh, the Boomer meeting.
Oh, the Hoover meeting, sorry.
When that, when that last meeting that we were, you and me and Aaron were in, and the meeting was at the end, I must have said, what are next steps?
So, uh, because they already has a transit system.
Right. So that's our next step.
Yeah, I'll follow up and see if we can.
I just want to keep that, I want to keep that conversation moving and I couldn't remember what the next step was going to be. But if you would follow up on that, I would appreciate it. So, uh, one other additional item. An old business. So, uh, Commissioner Davis and I. David and I attended. We tried to put it up on the pitch screen. So Annie was the recipient of the Athena Award from, uh, Pickerton Chamber. It's a word for very proud for her. Yeah. And so, you know, um, I was not scheduled to attend that event, um, because I've been hiding for six months. But a friend of mine, uh, kind of goaded me to go and thought, all right, fine, I'll go. Um, but I was thinking on the way there that there's just no way that somebody from Lancaster is going to win the Pickerton area chamber Athena Award. Um, and the competition was incredibly stiff for that. Um, and so when that got announced that, that Annie was the successful candidate there, I was just overwhelmed with pride for her and the county as a whole, really. To, to, to get that kind of recognition with those geography problems, uh, was just a surprising, amazing, fun evening. Uh, I, I thrilled that a friend of mine, uh, encouraged me to join that, uh, night. I, there's no place I would have rather been. Annie doesn't want to say anything about it, so just, just keep moving on here. New business, Commissioner Levesey. So, um, I, I will be attending, uh, the Habitat, uh, you know, and I'm always so excited about the, the family that is awarded that. You know, it is so so, uh, nice.
Healy's worked really hard for this. She's been in the partnership program for probably a year now. She works, she's got three children. Her youngest is under the age of one. And she works in Rowport, lives in Logan right now. So working her schedule around to make sure she gets all her sweat equity hours. She's never, she's been such a great part of our family and, um, we love to, I really love to see that too, just because, you know, if you've not attended the dedication, try to get to one. It really kind of puts that bow on the whole process and get to see how appreciative they are and just the joy of it. It's not something that you get to experience kind of on a daily basis. And, you know, you take for granted, I, I know I do all the time, I take for granted for the fact that I'm so very blessed to have one that I get to call my own. And so being able to see that joy and excitement every single time is.
So I'm curious in your, and, and I'm not asking for specifics or for you to tell a story, but when you, every time we talk about the families that, that, that get these homes, uh, we get to meet them. They seem really nice. It's wonderful. Don't you have any horror stories? Like, oh, but that one.
Luckily not Fairfield County. So actually we did just have to be selected family in Gainesville. Issues outside of our control. So, but, um, it does happen, but we've been very fortunate here in Fairfield County. And they're very rare.
And, and I knew that, that, that it was rare because, you know, we, we were, we're involved. We kind of know what's going on and, but I just thought, you know what? There has to be a horror story.
Yeah. And we have, we have that three strikes policy in place for a reason because we're humans working with humans. And they're going to do some things that unfortunately might cause that to happen. But overall, I think that's the, the great thing about the way our program is structured is they, they know what they're getting into in the beginning when they sign their partnership agreement. They know what's expected on both sides from Habitat and the families. And, and as Habitat, we're not perfect either. Sometimes we, our builds take a little longer than we want them to take. And we find things come up in the middle of the builds that we weren't expecting or delays because of weather. So it, it can be a very interesting process. So I know probably the side that you could hear from me is always the very positive and uplifting side.
Let's keep it that way.
It will always be that way, but, but it's great. Yeah. And we appreciate the commissioners and, and Annie and everybody in this room that's supported it in many different ways. And, um, this will be, the Fairfield Career Center will be the last of the seven from the ARP funding. So we're wrapping that up as well.
And to be clear, the new owner is back.
Yep. And it's a mortgage that she can take on and, um, it's a 0% interest mortgage, uh, for 30 years. It's such a significant difference, especially in, in the way that the market has changed so significantly over, not just from buying homes, but building homes, you know, our costs have decreased from 2020 to now exponentially. And so we were able to sell these homes to these families at 80,000 and now we're up in the 120s. Some other programs from the CBVG program, City and stuff, we're able to kind of help mitigate some of those costs and, but no, it's a great, great feeling for them.
Thank you. Commissioner Levesey, anything further under new business? Yeah. So I'll be attending, uh, the dedication of, uh, Memorial Highway for David A. Johnson. Be doing it, uh, Thursday at 1:00 at, uh, at the American Legion, uh, post, uh, 283 at, uh, or there in Pickerton on Rev. G Road. Great. Thank you very much, sir. Um, under new business, um, I may have touched on this last week, but, uh, I'll be attending the operating board meeting for the major crimes unit tomorrow at 2:00. The, um, underboard has recommended that, um, interim commander Scott Duff be made, uh, just commander without the interim title. And the operating board will, uh, hearing presumably act upon that recommendation tomorrow. Um, as one member of that group, um, I'll be supporting that, um, recommendation, uh, from the, the underboard there and we'll see how that goes. Things are moving along okay at MCU. We're, we're miles from where we were, which is a good thing. Um, and we still have, uh, a ways to go. Uh, but we're working on that. Is there any other issue or item that anybody would like to bring the attention of the commission at this time? Well, if you all would please rise, if you were able, to join us in the American Legion. Thank you. Some days with my hip, I wonder if I'm going to be able to rise if I'm able. But today I did. Bennett, do we have any announcements?
There are no announcements.
On to the approval minutes for the 13th, 2025. So moved. Second. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes passed 2-0. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2025 dash 05 dot 20 dot A, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in major expenditure object category contractual services.
Under, uh, Commissioners, I move Resolutions A, B, and C. Second. Discussion. Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed 2-0. From the Fairfield County Board of Elections, Resolution 2025 dash 05 dot 20 dot D, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Board of Elections Fund Number 2884, SOS 2025 Primary Election Funding.
So moved. Second, discussion.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes 2-0. From the Fairfield County Court of Common Pleas, Resolution 2025 dash 05 dot 20 dot E, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Common Pleas Court Fund Number 2689 Adult Based Corrections.
For Fairfield County, uh, Court of Common Pleas, I move Resolutions E and F. Second, discussion.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed 2-0. From the Fairfield County Dog Shelter, Resolution 2025 dash 05 dot 20 dot G, a resolution authorizing the donation of four phasers to Pickaway County Dog Ward.
So moved. Session.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2025 dash 05 dot 20 dot H, a resolution authorizing the. a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services between Nittany Partners LLC and Fairfield County related to information and insights regarding the housing market and potential future housing needs throughout the county.
Second discussion. This is a contract for a housing study that we'll be doing between the county, city, Lancaster, Lancaster, Florida. They all were contributing about a third, I'd say, on the, of the budget for it. So it's great to see all this partnership, various entities, housing community action. So I have more details, housing study for how we can move forward to try to beat the housing prices in the county. And the individuals doing it were part of the study we did at the last conference.
So I have a question. So this housing study would include cost of rent and additional items like that?
Yeah, it will, it will basically give us a map on what types of house stock we currently have and what we need. And what we could, so as we can do to developers to say, we have capacity to add even senior, you know, senior housing things that can move people up and allow them to reach a place.
So in community action, you know, their rent assistance and various other programs they have is based on a number of rent, for rent assistance, so on and so forth. And that also included Franklin County. And they've since taken Franklin County out of that number. And that rent number has actually gone down a hundred dollars a month. So it's a kind of an interesting thing that they would definitely be so broad and wide to actually include a graphical area than just Fairfield.
Further discussion? Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions passed two zero. From the Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot L, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, EMA Fund twenty seven oh seven, eighty-three forty-eight, EMPG grant FY twenty-four.
I'll move. Second discussion.
Like to get supplemental work. We did a good job today.
Further discussion? Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot M, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category, County Engineer, twenty twenty-four, motor vehicle for repairs and maintenance.
For Fairfield County Engineer, resolutions A, M, O, E, and T. Second discussion. I'll just mention to the folks that may be new to our meetings, it seems like we just say yes to everything, don't we? But here's the secret. Good luck getting something on our agenda if any one of us doesn't like it. Further discussion. Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions pass two zero. From Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot R, a resolution to amend the certificate, update receipt line item, and request for appropriations for Fairfield County Family, Family Children First Council, number seventy-five twenty-one, sub, sub-fund eighty-one ninety-four.
I'll move. Second discussion.
Our fund to be received from Fairfield County Foundation for Families of Indian. So thank you for allowing it on the agenda today.
Kind of joking, but kind of not. Thank you. Further discussion? Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot S, a resolution to approve a memo expense from a memo received for the cost of birth certificates paid to Fairfield County Health Departments as a memo expenditure for Fund Number twenty seventy-two, Public Children's Services.
So Fairfield County Jobs and Family Services, I'll move Resolutions S all the way through Resolution C. Second discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions pass two zero. From the Fairfield County Juvenile and Probate Court, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot AA, a resolution to approve the FY twenty-six juvenile court grant funding application for the Ohio, with the Ohio Department of Youth Services.
So move. Second discussion.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. From the Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot BB, a resolution to approve the repla- Sycamore Plaza Two.
Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, I move Resolutions BB, CC, and BD. Second discussion.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions pass two zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot EE, a resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into a major expenditure object category, one zero zero one, general fund.
So move. Second discussion.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. From the South Central Major Crimes Unit, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot FF, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for major crimes, seventy-eight thirty, eighty-three twelve, drug law enforcement grant FY twenty-two.
Under South Central Major Crimes Unit, I move Resolutions FF and GG. Second discussion. Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolutions pass two zero. From the Fairfield County Soil and Water Conservation District, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot HH, approval to enter into the twenty twenty-four cooperative agreement for funding to acquire agricultural easements through the Clean Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program for Fairfield County, Ohio.
Second discussion. Further discussion.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. For the payment of bills, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five dot twenty dot II, a resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners' approval.
Second discussion.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes two zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for June tenth, twenty twenty-five at nine AM.
Thank you, Bennett. This thing tomorrow at forty-five East Canal Street. You're supposed to be there.
Oh, that's the warp seat. He'd be not even there.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I will be a little late. I've got a caller. I'm here for the viewers.
That's why I'm curious and I, I can research it, but somebody might know. Forty-five East Canal Street is in Fairfield County or Franklin?
It's Franklin. I think it's their city building that used to see that car.
It's in Franklin County?
Yeah.
And what would make people to Fairfield County?
This is just being about.
All right, I'm going to get a briefing on this later. We don't have to make this sausage in front of you all. All right, we're fine. We're fine. Well, the other issue I wanted to mention is Commissioner Fix really disappointed he couldn't be here today because his birthday is just a couple of days. He wanted everybody to make a really big deal out of it, but then he got called away. He's starting sixty, six-oh, in just two days. So if you get the chance to kind of blast that any way you can, I know Commissioner Fix would really appreciate that.
And next Tuesday, we'll actually bring that up again.
Because then you got other issue items that anybody would like to bring to attention to the commission at this time. You're not not accepting motion?
Motion due during.
I got a motion adjourned. Second one, those motions I'm saying, I, I. I'm going to say, sorry. Motion carries, we are adjourned. We thank you all for coming.